Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, February 16th, 2016. It's 9:00 a.m. We're at the Palm Coast City Hall for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Nets.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shipley.
Yeah.
Councilmember Di Lorenzo.
Here.
Councilmember McGuire.
Here.
Councilmember Nobiel.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you. First item of business on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the February 2nd City Council meeting, the February 9th City Council workshop, the January 26th City Council Ethics Training, special meeting, and the February 9th City Council Sunshine and Public Records Training. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion for approval?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number two, proclamation recognizing February 16th, 2016 through February 22nd, 2016 as Citizens Observer Program Week. Mr. Di Lorenzo.
What are you doing, sir?
Okay, why don't we come around this way here if we could? We'll face the council. Whereas members of the Flagler County Sheriff's Office Citizen Observer Program provide 32,000-plus hours of service annually to the citizens of Palm Coast and Flagler County, and whereas the COPs are dedicated loyal volunteers committed to providing the citizens of Palm Coast with additional law enforcement presence, and whereas, on a daily basis, COP volunteers work in their communities donating their time to make a real difference in the lives of children and adults, and whereas, the Citizen Observer Program serves various functions in Palm Coast including traffic control, the home show, national night out, Christmas come true for children, events for veterans and soldiers, events for Habitat for Humanity, DUI checkpoints, community events, and memorial services, and whereas, Citizen Observer Program statistical highlights include 1,000, 109,000 miles of patrol, 115 special details, 208 house watches, 50 funeral escort details, 72 homes inspected and secured in the STAR approval program, 300 vehicle identification services and notaries executed, 2,350 hours assisting bailiffs in the courtroom, 3,500 citizens assisted at the Palm Coast precinct, over 29,000 phone calls, worked 436 traffic crashes, and issued citations and warning tickets when required, leaving the deputies free to perform more critical services, and whereas, during the 2015 COP volunteers in the city of Palm Coast donated 32,000 valuable hours at the cost savings equivalent to approximately 844,800 manning the Palm Coast substation, fingerprinting for children's identification, patrolling city streets, mindful of suspicious and criminal activity, and whereas, the COPs give unselfishly, in many other circumstances, serving the city of Palm Coast and assisting the Flagler County Sheriff's Office with street closures, power outages, traffic accidents, and checking on properties when the owner is absent. Now therefore be proclaimed by Mayor Nets and the City Council that the city of Palm Coast, that February 16th, 2016 through February 22nd, 2016 be officially designated Citizens Observer Program Week. Signed the 16th day of February, 2016, City of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nets, Mayor. Well, if I'll just take a moment to say, you guys and your whole crew do an incredible job for our community, and we appreciate every moment of it. You are absolute critical to the success of law enforcement in the city, and I appreciate all your help, and I'm sure City Council does as well. And who would not like to speak?
I just wanted to say that this is my staff, and we have 70, more or less, COPs that do the work, and they're the ones that deserve the credit. They're the ones that do the work, and I'm so very proud of them, and I thank you for offering this to them for a week. Thank you.
Commander for Sheriff of Flagler County, if I may add, COPs have not become just something that assists law enforcement, they've become the very foundation of everything we've done in my three years. The community expects us to be customer-oriented, and it's with their help that we've been able to do that. Our Palm Coast precinct has tripled in the amount of activity that we've seen since we've relocated at the city marketplace. We could not have managed that response without the COPs. They also free us up dramatically by overseeing our accidents, minor accidents. And just so you know, most communities, traffic accidents are done by FHP. You wait 20 minutes, a half an hour, an hour until an FHP officer comes. That's not what happens in this county. You get immediate response either from a deputy or from a COP. We remove that accident from the streets as quickly as possible and provide that service. So I want to thank the City Council for recognizing our COPs. They do incredible work, and particularly Sonia Byrne, who is the spirit and the heart and soul of this COPs and all the COPs that are under her. Thank you so much for all you do.
And the vagina is down there.
And you should get everything else.
And everyone.
I can fit everyone. I'm going to do a couple different shots, so just keep smiling. And there's a gentleman, I can barely see your face, so just maybe shake it off.
And if I may, I'd like to put in a plug for one of the many services that the so-called cops do. It was two years ago, three years ago, at a similar presentation, one of their members did a presentation about their home inspection program to make it more burglar-proof. I chatted to him afterwards, and he said, "Well, why don't we do your home?" And I said, "Ah, you don't have to worry about it. I built my house myself, I know." "Oh, come on, let us give it a shot." About a week later, he came out, and to my amaze, in 45 weeks, he came with a list of things that I could do to make the home more burglar-resistant, and totaled up the total cost of what was involved, was about $40, some lengths of DVC pipe, a different kind of latch on the door, different kind of screws, and took me maybe an hour in total. But I am convinced that it was worth not only the 35 minutes, but the $40 and the hour time. So something you might want to think about, if you own your own home, give them a call. They have wonderful service. Okay, agenda item number three. Seems to be a propitious timing. Presentation on Palm Coast Law Enforcement Safety, something City Council has asked for. Cindy.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, during your goal-setting strategic action planning last year, you asked for basically an annual report from the sheriff on law enforcement efforts and the safety of our community, and of course Sheriff Manfree was more than willing to do that. And Cindy's happy because she gets to check off something on her performance measures that this is done. So Sheriff, she owes you now, so let's take it from here.
Well, thank you. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to present the law enforcement services that we provide to the city of Palm Coast. And like any service, it's all about relationships. And I'm going to spend a little time going through exactly the numbers, what we've done. We had a brief video that we'd like to show you so you can see graphically what we provide to the citizens of Palm Coast. But more importantly, I think, is the relationship that we have created, myself and Commander Condon, with the city. What we intend, our intent has always been, the first time this relationship was established in my first term in 2001, was to provide you services as if it was your law enforcement department. And I think it's been a great relationship, not only financially for the city, but in terms of the quick responses that we provided, and I want to particularly single out Commander Condon for the service that we've provided to the city. I think each, every one of you as councilmembers and those before you, and Mr. Landon, Mr. Kelton before him, have had the pleasure of serving with someone who is responsive to all your needs, always finding a way to say yes to whatever it is that you need. So we're, I'm very proud of the work that we do for the city of Palm Coast. So we'll start our PowerPoint. So the Flagler County Sheriff's Office provides the community with the highest quality of law enforcement and inmate services through a commitment to accountability, integrity, and respect. That is our motto. It's a simple acronym, AR. It's more than just a sheriff's contract with police services, it's a commitment to the community. Palm Coast is the largest community in this county. I happen to be a resident, so the commitment comes right from the top, right down to the bottom. All the resources of your police department are serviced tailored specifically to the needs of this city. And just, the services here in the city of Palm Coast are different than the services we provide in most areas, because the city of Palm Coast is a more concentrated area, has more suburban-type of issues than we see in the other areas, so we do tailor our services to the issues here inside Palm Coast. Accreditation, I know the city is very interested in performance standards. Talking to the city manager on a monthly basis, we talk about standards. Well, accreditation is one of those standards. Increases law enforcement, enables you to prevent and control crimes, more effective and efficient delivery of law enforcement services to the community and service. It serves as a yardstick to measure the effectiveness of the agency's programs and services. So in July, we started our accreditation process, and we got reaccredited. But it wasn't just that we got reaccredited on October 7, 2015. It's what they said about the sheriff's office at that time. They said, "We are performing at the highest level possible." This has always been my vision from the first time I became sheriff, when we got accredited in my first term, is to be able to look to the surrounding law enforcement community and say, "We are performing the best practices." And at the time, when I became sheriff in 2001, we were the only sheriff's office in northeast Florida that was not accredited. So it has been a, it's a constant, it's not a one-time thing. Accreditation means that every single day you review your policies and make sure your employees are performing those policies to the best that they can. So our largest division inside the sheriff's office is the Patrol Division, our Neighborhood Services Division. And we use that word Neighborhood Services because it encapsulates what I believe is the most important part of law enforcement, is community policing. It's the largest division, our sworn deputies are assigned to such areas as patrol, special operation, court services, and traffic enforcement. The Neighborhood Service Division is the backbone of the agency, is the most visible section at the sheriff's office. It also prides itself on providing a citizen the highest quality of law enforcement services. Before you continue, the vehicle that we have, that new insignia, it's a refreshing of our design. That design was designed by one of our deputies. We had a sort of a mini contest, and this design came up. We did a Survey Monkey, and this one was picked, and it's part of our overall view of trying to always work problems from the bottom up. The best ideas always come from the bottom. So there's two platoons. We work 12-hour shifts. It is a much more efficient use of our resources. It gives our deputies more time off to recover from the rigor of patrolling. So there's an Alpha Squad that works days to begin with, and then there's an Alpha Red and Alpha Blue. One works day, one works night, and then we have a second platoon, which is Bravo Red, and then Bravo Blue. And every 90 days, they rotate. So deputies work a day shift, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for three months, and then they revert to the night shift. So you're seeing, and there has been discussion about this in law enforcement, what happens when you do it that way, you get the best deputies on each shift. There has been conversation about just having a designated day shift and night shift. What that often happens is you have more senior people obviously want the best shift, and you're less senior people on a night shift, so you don't get a differentiation in quality. We don't do that here. Each platoon works 12-hour shifts, provides citywide protection, community services 24 hours, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Each shift is comprised and supervised by a sergeant, two corporals. Each platoon is overseen by a platoon commander. The platoon commander and supervisors work side by side with the deputies on a daily basis to provide citizens with the highest level of law enforcement services. And since I've become sheriff, we have reduced our supervisor-to-deputy ratio from 2 to 1 to 4 to 1. So that means there's more deputies on the street, we have 16 deputies per shift, 12 of them are working as deputies taking calls and in force supervises, and then you have our traffic unit and our K-9 unit as well. Deputies respond to calls for service proactively, patrol the city of Palm Coast, deter criminal activity. We responded to 102,000, 237 calls for service in the city of Palm Coast last year. Neighborhood service deputies work hand-in-hand with Palm Coast code informers, enforcement and animal control to address quality of life issues throughout the city. And just, if I could just talk about those calls for service, there are a lot of things contained in that. And on a shift-by-shift basis, we have a command report that tells me how many service calls we run to, how many traffic stops, how many community policing we did, how many arrests we made. So we constantly monitor the activity of our sheriff's deputies to make sure that we have the proper services during those shifts. The predominant amount of service calls are obviously from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., call less in the evening. But we respond to just about anything you can think of, from barking dogs to crime at Walmart, to just the deputies seeing someone walking down the street, stopping, everything okay. That's the type of response that we'd like to see from our deputies. Crime stats, and I know this looks like a bit of a blur. The big news is that crime is still down in Palm Coast by 1.2%, and this is why the while our overall population has grown. So population has grown by somewhere between 5% and 6%. I haven't seen the latest numbers since I've been sheriff, but overall crime is down by about 5%. And one of the things that dramatically has decreased is the amount of burglaries. Last year, we had the same amount of burglaries we had in 2001 when we had half the population. So we're doing a really good job of, as the mayor said, reinforcing that idea that the community needs to help us keep their homes safe. Our big issue, to be honest with you, this would be a dramatic decrease, but for one reason, it's car burglaries. We still have not convinced our public that as safe as this community is, and we have half the crime that Putnam County and Kalusha County has, literally half the crime on a per-population, per-thousand basis, we still have crime. And crime is one of opportunities. So we have tried to educate the public through public service announcements, through even putting up message boards. The city allows us to use their message board in communities and say, "Please lock your car and keep valuables out of there." If I could convince each and every person to do that, you would see this crime drop down dramatically. And most of the car burglaries are not smash and grabs. Most of them are kids at night rummaging through cars, and all they do is check doors that are parked, and if they're open, they go in, and they rummage around in the car. And it's incredible, people leaving their cars, guns, computers, and phones, and money, and their keys to the car as well. So we're not going to give up trying to educate the public, and if any of you have any ideas about how to do that better, I'm certainly open to those suggestions, because that's really the focus. I'm asked a lot about narcotics in our community. We are very fortunate to have, have not seen the increase in addiction that we've seen in south Florida, and is now starting in Jacksonville. The flock of synthetic drugs, meth, crack, heroin, I'm not telling you to not around, but they have not become the only law enforcement in our community, and that's because of our efforts through our narcotics and undercover units. Calls for service, it just gives you a quick breakdown of how it compares to the county as a total, and our community policing, and they basically correspond to the 78% of its population in terms of our service calls. Our response times, which have stayed pretty generally around five minutes from the time that we get a call to time someone's dispatch. So we try to kept that number in. It's not always been easy, because economics have made us have to pare our force a little bit, but we have been able to maintain a sufficient amount of road patrol deputies. That's what our focus always is. We never pull from the road for anything other than a need. So our response time has stayed pretty much the same as you can see over each and every month.
Sheriff, how do you measure response time? When does your response time clock start ticking?
From the time the call gets in to, again, it depends on what type of call it is. So, you know, it's an average. It's not every call is five minutes. If there is a burglary call, you know, those calls may be within a minute. If there's something high-profile, you know, a traffic accident where there's injuries, those calls may be in seconds, you know. Also, it depends on where that deputy is to where the call is. Sometimes it just so happens, when we get the call, the deputy's there so we can respond quickly. Sometimes it's a little further. Sometimes that zone deputy is tied up, so we have to bring a zone deputy from another zone to back him up or supervise. So those are all the factors.
Who makes that decision, Mr. Sheriff?
I'm sorry.
Who makes the decision who's going to respond to a call?
What happens is we'll get, dispatch gets the phone call about what the issue is. He then, she then has a commutated dispatch, and I always ask, you know, offer to you if you ever want to come and see the Communications Division, which I'm very proud of, it's really St. Vior. It comes up on a screen where that call is coming from, and actually shows on a map where it is. And then she can see what the closest unit is to that call by GPS. And then she picks out that unit and calls that unit and says, you know, "Bravo, Bravo 1, you know, we have a call here." And he may say, "Well, I'm still tied up with another call." Another deputy who's not tied up closest will say, "I can respond to that." So it's a constant, you know, shifting of who is the closest to that call, depending on, you know, where the location of deputy at the time and where the call is. And some calls require multiple deputy responses. You know, if there is an active shooter, or there's a threat of, you know, injury, you don't get just one deputy. You get as many deputies as we can get there to ensure the safety of the citizen.
Sheriff, do these statistics that you're showing, do those include SRO activity?
In terms of response time, or?
No, in all the data.
Yes, I mean, in terms of arrests. We have some information on SROs on screen that you'll be able to see, particularly what our SROs are doing.
Thank you.
And this is just going through, what we do is we monitor crash activity inside the county. At our comstat meeting, every Thursday, we sit down and meet and look backwards and see where the crime occurred in our county, what is spiking, so that we can have additional resources sent to that particular area. We also do that with crashes. We start seeing patterns, like anything else. We're seeing, you know, some additional crashes on Palm Coast Parkway and Cypress Point, so we send more resources to it. So this just gives you a breakdown of the crashes with no injuries inside the county, inside the city, crashes with injuries, hit-and-run, no injuries, crash, hit-and-run runs with injuries. So our total crashes last year were about 2,500. That stays pretty constant, and 2,000 of those are inside the city. You see the citations issued. Again, what I'm very happy about is our warnings are up. As I told my deputies, sometime a lesson, just a conversation with a citizen works equally as well as a ticket being issued. So we really push trying to give out warnings, not always tickets if it's appropriate. And you see the tickets issued inside of the city of Palm Coast and the county, and the total citations. Total warnings are 77, 189, total citations 12,417. So we are very active. We have a five-man traffic unit that is out there every day, in addition to all our deputies who are encouraged. And just so you know, every month I get a report of the activity of each and every deputy, each and every traffic officer, each and every K-9. So I can tell who's out there making arrests, who's making traffic stops, and we use that as a performance measure when we deal with our deputies on a monthly basis. I see it, I tell my chief deputy if I see an issue, and it goes down to that deputy. And just, we have just implemented a step plan, or reimplemented it for my first term, and part of that step plan is performance measures. You don't get your additional step unless you have a good review, and one of the performance measures is your activity inside of those reports. Palm Coast precinct, again, we are extraordinarily proud of how this has grown. We appreciate the city's effort, you know, that was a, again, collaborative effort, like so much of what we do with the city. We identified this particular location. We were able to build out 2,000 square feet with the city's systems. It cost us about $15,000 in materials, and the city did great work. It's a terrific location, and we get lots of compliments from it. The former location, we were paying almost $30 a square foot, we're paying $10 a square foot here. And so we got double the space and got $1,000 less. We now, the city had provided us with additional space for free on the second floor. That has now gone away since you've moved, but we still rent that space upstairs. There's a ribbon cutting this week. It's now our PAL office and our Community Service Division. Our Community Service Division has grown, and I encourage all of you to come out to the ribbon cutting and see how well that is working. It's also the headquarters for our COPs. Its location, our seniors versus crime program, which is really going like gang versus, I guess, good in some respects, because we now have a way of dealing with these crimes, bad in the sense that, you know, our citizen's being targeted by outsiders for fraud. It's also the headquarters of our traffic unit. The statistics you've heard once before, but it doesn't hurt saying again, because it's quite exemplary. Public health face, 3,500. Public contacts, almost 30,000 phone calls, 1,500 printings, 305 children's printings, VIN requests, 104, notaries executed, 202, gun permits, assistance, 250. So they do quite a bit there, they stay very busy. Traffic crash investigation, as I indicated before, this has just been a huge boon to our Patrol Division, freeing them up to do more patrolling on our streets. They also are We now, the city had provided us with additional space for free on the second floor. That has now gone away since you've moved, but we still rent that space upstairs. There's a ribbon cutting this week. It's now our PAL office in our community service division. Our community service division has grown, and I encourage all of you to come out to the ribbon cutting and see how well that is working. It's also the headquarters for our COPs. It's a location on the seniors versus crime program, which is really going like gang busts, and I guess good in some respects because we now have a way of dealing with these crimes, bad in the sense that, you know, our citizens are being targeted by outsiders for fraud. It's also the headquarters of our trafficking. The statistics you've heard once before, but it doesn't hurt saying again because it's quite exemplary. Public health face 3,500, public contacts, almost 30,000 phone calls, 1,500 printings, 305 children's printings, victim requests 104, notaries executed 202, gun permits assistance 250. So they do quite a bit there, they stay very busy. Traffic crash investigation, as I indicated before, this has just been a huge boon to our patrol division, freeing them up to do more patrolling on our streets. They also saw 436 traffic crashes, 47 responsive traffic controls and other lights being out, 54 citations issued, those are mostly handicap parking violations, warning tickets issued 388, so very active. What we talked about, what the mayor talked about before is our star, well, our house watch, and we'll talk about star approval in a second. When people go away, a lot of our homes in our community are second homes, who are owned by retirees who do travel. They can always request house watches. We always send two COPs there. They do a complete walk-around inspection. We had 208 home watches completed in 2015, and again, it's a service that we offer to anyone in the city of Palm Coast. Star approval program, which the mayor was talking about, is a terrific program. They've been through my home as well, very simple procedures, and as we tell citizens, help us, help you. We can drive this burglary rate down. It is the most invasive form of crime that we have when someone is in your home, and it's so easy with very simple steps to prevent a burglar from coming in your house. I've gotten a lot of questions about, do I need a home security system? I'm the sheriff and I have a home security system. It's the best effects. Burglars do not like noise, so the home security systems have become less and less expensive to something that every citizen should have. It's just an easy way to prevent you from being burglarized and to protect your valuables. And as we've said before, all of the things that they do, especially in 2015, it's putting the last cross, 54, total man hours bombed here, 32,000, total miles driven, 19,000, just incredible, just the foundation of everything we do. And they save taxpayers $844,800. That's our wonderful group. So seniors versus crime, I'll just take a very quick second. As everyone knows, we have this RMS scan that's going on, which I just constantly tell people, if it's coming by phone, hang up the phone or ask them to send it to you in a letter. No one, the fire departments, the sheriff's office, no police department does any sort of, you know, fundraising through the phone, they never do it. So we always caution people on that. But seniors versus crime is something even more insidious. It's houses need to be fixed up from time to time, and we have people who do prey on our elderly, on services that they've asked for. And we always encourage anybody, particularly seniors, to check with the city to make sure those contractors are licensed inside the city of Palm Coast and to make sure they don't have any complaints. But unfortunately, that happens. Now, it just got started at the end of 2015, so that amount that was recovered is relatively small, but I think Commander Condon said we're, in just one and a half months, we probably recovered that amount of money, so you can see how successful it's going to be this year. And hopefully, we will teach our predators that, you know, we're not going to stand for this and we're going to go after them. And they're doing a great job. It's a collaboration with the Attorney General and one of our CEPs who's now been trained in this area. We have tried to, we've really expanded our neighborhood watch. Sergeant Mike Lutz, who, if those of you have met him, is the most enthusiastic community law enforcement officer I've ever met. He has 24 neighborhood watch meetings per year, 30 crime prevention safety talks, 16 women's self-defense classes, which we get a lot of participation, 255 last year. He has citizens academy for six weeks, twice a week, 115 speaking engagements, participated in 21 community events, attended 51 board committee and various other meetings. This is the essence of community policing, is constantly reaching out to the community to see how we can serve them better and making their lives safer. Our traffic motor unit, which is under Commander Condon, provides not only traffic enforcement, but they do escorts, parades, they do traffic surveys and other community events held in the city of Palm Coast. And yes, we do have new vehicles. They are BMWs, and it wasn't my choice, a lot of people have accused me of being a little partial BMWs. It was the choice of our deputies. It's the way of the future, they're much safer, they're much quieter, and more importantly, they last a lot longer than the hollies do, in some cases, double the life expectancy of the hollies. A school resource officer unit. We, they are just doing an incredible job. Sergeant Welker is now the head of the unit. He's a former K-9 officer and also a former SRO. He, and along with Deputy Grant, assigned to Flagler Palm Coast High School, Deputy John Landy, assigned to Montez, Deputy Steve Carr is assigned to Buddy Taylor and Wadsworth, Deputy Sam Cooper is assigned to the Entrells and Belter. And then one of the things that came out of some of the active shooters inside schools was that we didn't have enough resources for, to oversee the elementary schools. So what we did was we had our supervisor Sergeant Welker assigned to the Flagler Palm Coast, and that freed up Deputy Ralph Lillivah to do elementary school as resource officer activities. And it's worked valueously. The kids love him, he's the perfect person to do this kind of activity. And in my opinion, the most important time to get involved with children from a law enforcement perspective is the elementary level. That's when we can gain respect to law enforcement and children that law enforcement is there to be their friend, to keep them from being bullied, or when they're having issues at home that are overwhelming them in school. We are not there as to be disciplinarians, we are there as mentors to students, and that's what our overall vision is. So this is something that I'm very proud of, arrests when I started in the sheriff's office with 108 arrests. We were down last year 65, we're probably going to be half that this year. It's not, doesn't mean we're not making arrests, it means that we're finding alternatives to arrests. Not every situation requires a ticket, as I indicated, not every situation requires an arrest. There's a civil citation program that has been implemented for many years. We have reinforced our efforts there. So where we can give a civil citation, which is for someone, for a crime misdemeanor or less, to someone who's, has not previously been arrested, we do it. The legislature, seeing how successful it is, has now allowed us to give us, give multiple civil citations. Before, it was only one over the young person's life. Now we can give multiples if we feel it's warranted. Usually, there's got to be some attenuation between the first and the second citation. But that's why you're seeing the arrests go down. I think that's what our role is supposed to be in school, preventing kids from being arrested, not actually arresting them unless they have to be. Another thing that we, so you see it's only a 28% decrease, 38% overall decrease, and our civil citations have increased. So Baker Acts. Baker Acts simply are when people, when children or adults are a danger to themselves or to others, they can be taken to a location and observed for 72 hours. In 13 and 14, my first year, we had 45 Baker Acts. We sat down at school and said, first of all, whenever we show this, we're getting, this is what we should be doing, or the school should be doing, the right response. And it's also taking arrests out of schools for two to three hours at a time. So we work with the school system, and we have a much better system of vetting whether children need to be Baker Acted. A psychologist from the school is now oversees this process. A lot of times, it's just issues that kids have, and a lot of it can be de-escalated just by having a psychologist speak with those students and the parents to find out what the root cause is. So I believe that decreases, shows that it's been an effective program. Our investigative service division is a division that has the ultimate responsibility for investigation of homicides, thefts, robberies, frauds, burglaries, aggravated assaults, rapes, and other such crimes, and quite extensive investigation within the city of Palm Coast. And I'll just quickly just tell you that one of the things that we've done in the past two years is our sexual assault victims, when I started as sheriff, would be sent to Daytona in order for their examinations to be done. And that was, in my opinion, revictimizing our sexual assault victims by taking my 40 minutes out of the county and 40 minutes back. We now have a relationship with the Family Life Center, so all of our sexual assault victims, if they're not injured, go to the Family Life Center. It's a much more, better environment for them to have to deal with their situation. The Family Life Center is one of our best facilities in this town to deal with issues related to domestic violence. And we also have a relationship with the hospital where they're designated a separate room for our sexual assault victims, where they can have privacy during the examination. Our victim services unit, which we provide countywide, but also the city, is available to any citizen of Flagler County, provides emotional support and victim services, and provides emotional support in times of stress. They work as support systems to victim survivors and their families from traumatic events. The other services provided in the city of Palm Coast, this you get outside of the contract, this is an addition that we provide, a SWAT team, which is one of the tops in the state, a crisis negotiation, a K-9 unit, our narcotics, a marine division, our dive team, our bike patrol, our PAL program, which has dramatically increased, our mounted posse, which does patrols inside of our commercial areas during holidays, and our honor guard.
Sheriff?
Yes, sir.
Drug trafficking in the city of Palm Coast, what's your opinion of the seriousness of that and how are you addressing it?
Again, fortunately, I hate to say this because it's always, it's constantly changing, we're seeing a dramatic decrease in the use of drugs in our area. I'm not telling you that it can't change tomorrow, it's a constant shifting. We see, we don't see that, you know, the heroin yet, that overwhelming heroin, the pills have completely gone away because of the pill registry that was established by the legislature. Pills were overwhelming our community. Now, because doctors can only prescribe medication based on that registry, they must by law go to that registry and see if anyone has been given, prescribed, prescribed a medication within that 30-day period, pills have disappeared from our streets. It's almost, we almost make no arrests with that. Our arrests generally are low amounts of marijuana is what we see. We see a little crack, we see a little meth, those are the things that we're seeing. The issues for both crack and meth, one of the reasons why they come and go is that they kill people. Crack and meth, they're poisons to the body, so those people wind up destroying their health or eventually, you know, killing themselves by utilizing that. And the same thing with heroin. Heroin, because it kills people, comes in ways. People start using it because the price is low, and this is all supply and demand. Narcotics is no different than gasoline. People find it cheapest high. So the cheapest high right now is crack. But then we put a resource into that, it lowers the supply, the prices go up, so we go to the next one. The synthetics are the things that are the most troubling, because those have international implications. Most of the synthetics are being created in China. In fact, I don't know if you saw, there was recently a billion dollars' worth of synthetic meth, which is seized in Australia on its way to the United States, a billion dollars. They're creating these synthetic drugs and then shipping us, shipping to the United States. In fact, I've talked to some military personnel, a lot of what our subs at our Navy do is inadicting those boats on our high seas that are coming into our country to poison our youth. But the problem simply is that the synthetics constantly are changing, and the schedule that makes them illegal has to be specific as to what that compound is, so.
Overall assessment, Sheriff, is that traffic, drug trafficking in Palm Coast is down, does that also include the schools?
Yes, I mean, we do have, we just had a conversation with Superintendent Leather, and they've seen a bit of a rise in it. So like everything else, you have to be responsible for what's going on, so we're going to bring our K-9 dog in and make sure that, you know, the students know that we're going to be vigilant about bringing drugs into the schools. My kids have all gone to the schools, my latest just graduated. I'm not telling you it's not there, but not in the amounts that you see in some community where it overwhelms them. And we just have to be vigilant, you know, it can change tomorrow in terms of what new drug is coming in and affecting our youth. But we're constantly monitoring what's going on. We're in a multi-county task force with both Volusia and St. John's and Putnam County. We monitor the state attorney's office. We have a sheriff's association, so I see from the big picture what's happening in Orlando, Jacksonville, and south, and we prepare ourselves for the next wave, because whatever starts there is eventually going to make its way here. So we have the ability to, you know, to be able to respond quickly to changes in the Okay, that is our presentation. If we have some time, we'd like to, you just have created a video of the agency, which shows you very graphically what we do. And the importance of this video is not only for presentations like this. One of our challenges right now is recruiting. With the economy picking up, a lot of people who weren't going into government are now getting jobs in the private sector. So this video allows us to go to the schools in St. John's and Volusia County, unfortunately do not have a certification class in Flagler County, and try to get people interested in working in Flagler County, so it's been a great recruiting tool.
Do you want to play the video?
That was it?
Sure.
Hi, I'm Jim Anfree, sheriff for Flagler County. I invite you behind the scenes of your Flagler County Sheriff's Office to see what the brave men and women do on a daily basis to keep our community safe.
Going to be E-Echo, El Lima, Essiera, H-Hotel.
The communication center is the hub of any law enforcement agency. The communication specialists who staff this center handle police, fire, and medical calls for service on 911 and non-emergency lines. This state-of-the-art communication center handles on average more than 185,000 calls for service each year. When the public thinks of the Flagler County Sheriff's Office, the first image that comes to mind is usually the uniform deputy and his or her distinctive green and white car with the gold star. These uniform deputies are part of the sheriff's Neighborhood Services Division, our largest division. These highly visible patrol cars are responsible for investigating reported offenses such as burglaries, the most prevalent felony, domestic violence complaints, traffic accidents, responding to reports of prowlers, alarms, suspicious persons or vehicles. The Flagler County Sheriff's Office also has a traffic unit responsible for all aspects of traffic law enforcement. They investigate traffic accidents and direct traffic during large congested events. The traffic unit also utilizes motorcycles as a key tool in their traffic enforcement efforts. The Flagler County Sheriff's Office patrols a county covering some 571 square miles with a population of approximately 102,000. This figure does not account for the thousands who visit our beaches and county resources on a daily basis. With such a heavy workload, there's a demand and necessity for reliable transportation, and that's the job of the Fleet Operations Division. In recent years, the sheriff and the county have consolidated the cost of vehicle maintenance under one roof. It's a complete mechanical shop specially designed to keep this large variety of vehicles in top operating condition. The sheriff's investigative services division is divided into three primary investigative units with the responsibility for major crimes, property crimes, and narcotics and specialized investigations. Persons crimes detectives are especially trained to investigate the harshest and most violent crimes which occur in Flagler County. These include but are not limited to all deaths, serious or aggravated batteries, assaults, sex crimes, robberies. Detectives assigned to the property crimes unit investigate general crimes such as burglaries, thefts, fraud, and computer crimes. The special investigation unit investigates all narcotics, organized crime, vice-related, and other investigations of a sensitive nature. The sheriff's office has just implemented a state-of-the-art crime scene unit to respond to all sorts of crimes and disasters in order to document, collect, and process evidence and related items for the sheriff's office and other law enforcement and public safety agencies. This unit is available 24/7. Within the crime scene investigations unit is the evidence section. This section is charged with processing, preserving, and the disposition of all property and/or evidence gathered in the investigation of crimes and calls for service. The victim advocate is available to assist crime victims in dealing with what has happened to them and provides referrals to agencies that can assist with providing much-needed The special operations unit of the Flagler County Sheriff's Office is comprised of deputies trained in specialized areas. These highly skilled employees are prepared to respond to unique situations with specialized tools at their disposal. These deputies and their highly trained K-9 partners answer both routine and emergency calls, performing numerous duties including drug and explosive searches, building searches, and tracking suspects wanted by law enforcement. Another specialized unit at the Flagler County Sheriff's Office is the mounted posse, which consists of deputies, civilian volunteers, and their horses. This unit is used in special patrols for civic functions and in special circumstance missing persons and criminal searches. The bicycle, bike unit, provides patrol services with close contact with the public, providing a highly visible and accessible presence in high crime or problem areas. Marine operations and the underwater search and recovery unit are also part of the specialized group within the sheriff's office. These deputies afloat patrol lakes, the intercoastal waterways, as well as the Atlantic Ocean in Flagler County. They conduct boating safety inspections, enforce boating laws, and respond to routine and emergency calls on the water. With the large lakes, canals, and marshes in Flagler County, not to mention the extensive shoreline to patrol along the Atlantic coast, there is often need for a dive team. The mission of the sheriff's underwater search and recovery unit is to search for and recover evidence of crimes and victims of drowning due to swimming, boating, or other accidents or even foul play. Another special operations unit involved with regulating proper use of the environment is the agricultural unit, which patrols ranches, groves, and other agricultural areas. The special weapons and tactics team, or SWAT, is one of the most colorful and exciting units of the Flagler County Sheriff's Office. Their members come from throughout the regular units within the agency as well as from our local police departments. The SWAT team also has paramedics from Flagler County and the city of Palm Coast to provide immediate medical attention. The crisis negotiations team is also part of special operations and is on call 24 hours a day to respond to a wide variety of critical hostage and barricaded situations. The emergency response team is a self-contained, quick reactionary force designed to handle fast-breaking emergency situations involving civil unrest and searches for missing and endangered individuals. The school resource deputy program is a wonderful community enrichment effort at the Flagler County Sheriff's Office. The unit acts as a special resource to prevent delinquency and handle school-related issues. They provide counseling to students and help young people understand the role law enforcement plays within an ordered society. These part-time employees are specially trained school crossing guards to ensure the safety of school-aged children, citizens, and the motoring public in school zones throughout Flagler County. One of the youth outreach programs supported by the Flagler County Sheriff's Office as part of its community enhancement efforts is the Police Athletic League, or PAL. From football to baseball to arts and creative activities, PAL gives kids a positive team-building experience while keeping them off the streets and involved in organized play. Flagler Explorers Post 410 provides exciting opportunities and experiences for young people aged 14 to 21 who are in good standing in their school and are interested in a career as a professional law enforcement officer. Their work throughout their exploring careers instills citizenship through public service. Many past explorers have found a full-time career in law enforcement. The Flagler County Sheriff's Office also has a thriving volunteer program with many serving in all areas of the agency. The Citizen Observer Patrol Program is staffed by resident volunteers that patrol the county in official sheriff's vehicles. Their presence is a valuable, visible deterrent to crime. They act as the eyes and ears of the department, keeping a watch on the community of which they're an active part. The COPS program also offers a vacation watch program, one designed to have COPs check on the homes of residents who may be out of town. One of the most successful programs the COPS manage is the Secure Home Star of Approval Program. This free program will bring a professionally trained volunteer to your home to conduct a crime prevention checklist to survey just how secure your home is against burglars. The sheriff's Civil Division serves the civil courts of Flagler County, serving papers such as summons, subpoenas, and petitions for hearings, eviction notices, child custody and support matters, and other cases falling under the jurisdiction of civil courts. The Flagler County Sheriff's Office provides security for the Kim C. Hammond Judicial Center. Deputies are responsible for the integrity of jurors, for coordinating the transportation of prisoners, escorting witnesses in and out of hearings and trials, and accompanying each judge in chambers and courtrooms, and for many other security duties in the courthouse. The Flagler County Sheriff's Office Detention Services Division is a 24/7 operation, providing for the care, custody, and control of people arrested and brought to the jail for processing, those who have been sentenced to county jail, and those who are awaiting trial. An average daily population over the past few years has been steady at 149 inmates in a 132-bed facility. At one time in July of 2014, the population was at 170. That's why in 2015, the sheriff's office began construction on a much-needed jail expansion, adding an additional 270 beds to accommodate current and future needs. In recent years, the Detention Services Division's security has been improved and a number of work programs instituted, as well as programs where inmates are required to pay for services. These policies have helped to hold operating costs down, saving taxpayer dollars. Accreditation is a voluntary process which provides a systematic review and assessment of the agency and all of its policies and procedures. Flagler County Sheriff's chaplains are ordained members of the clergy who donate their time and talents in partnership with the members of the Flagler County Sheriff's Office in service to our communities. Each of our chaplains has received specialized training and instruction in death notification, critical incident stress management, and pastoral crisis intervention. The Crisis Intervention Stress Management Team is one of the newest additions to the Flagler County Sheriff's Office. A team of specially trained deputies, civilians, and a licensed mental health worker provide immediate intervention through diffusions, debriefings, and mental health following up to employees and their families. The Community Outreach Unit is the public education arm of the Flagler County Sheriff's Office, concentrating on matters regarding personal safety and crime prevention. This unit manages all neighborhood crime watch programs in over 40 neighborhoods. The unit also hosts the Citizens Academy, a program developed to create partnership between the Flagler County Sheriff's Office and the community we serve. The Flagler County Sheriff's Office has contracted with Flagler County to provide enhanced information technology services. This team approach has improved services and has been a cost savings to the citizens of Flagler County. With all the different activities and services provided by the Flagler County Sheriff's Office, it is important to keep the flow of information open to the public. That's the job of the Media Relations Unit and its PIOs. These specially trained employees keep citizens informed on the activities within the department, coordinating public affairs, and dealing directly with the media on high-profile incidents. The office of the sheriff is the central hub of all activities in the sheriff's office. The sheriff is elected every four years and is the chief law enforcement officer in the county. The executive assistant to the sheriff coordinates all administrative activities for the sheriff. The chief deputy is the second in command and is responsible for the daily operations of the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office has a part-time legal advisor who is available to handle a broad range of legal matters. All actions taken by members of the Flagler County Sheriff's Office create paperwork, reports, citations, communications with state and federal agencies, and all of these records are preserved by the records section. The finance section oversees the budgetary and fiscal management of the sheriff's office. The purchasing and inventory manager plays a crucial role in the administering of policies regarding the procurement of goods and services for the operation of the sheriff's office. The Human Resources Division has a primary focus of delivering solid customer service to all employees while maintaining a qualified and diverse workforce. All new employees are given an extensive orientation, with new deputies taking additional field training. The training continues throughout a deputy's career. As the primary crime investigative and law enforcement agency in Flagler County, the sheriff's office is a complex organization. It is a wide-ranging entity composed of many specialized parts, as you have just seen.
Now that you've been behind the scenes at the Flagler County Sheriff's Office, I'm sure you can see why I'm so very proud of the brave men and women of the Flagler County Sheriff's Office and what they do to keep our community safe on a daily basis. Remember, the Flagler County Sheriff's Office is here to serve you.
The Flagler County Sheriff's Office is working 24 hours a day for your safety and peace of mind, patrolling the county's roadways, investigating crimes, and pursuing the people who prey on others.
I have two questions, Sheriff. For the city of Palm Coast, how do you divide it into precincts and what's the population in terms of deputies for each one?
Well, it's not precincts, they're zones. We have seven zones in the county. Zone one is basically beachside zone, is populated by one deputy. You then have zone two, which is essentially east of 95, Grand Haven, F-section, two deputies patrol that. There's zone three, which is basically Bs. Zone four, which is basically the W's and a little bit of the Rs and the Ps. Zone five is the S-section and the E-section. Zone six and zone seven are west of US one. So we populate based on activity. And as I indicated, it's a shift. They don't just sit in their zone and if there's a call next door, they shift based on where the call volumes are going. So sometimes you'll have six come down and help with zone five, backup calls. They also oversee Benel, City Benel, assist Benel. Zone seven will come down and assist in the city of Palm Coast, the W's and the Bs. And same thing with zone one, we'll assist Flag Beach. So, you know, we have a pretty good coordination with the other cities' police departments, so we constantly shift based on what the call.
My last question is, with the cameras in the city of Palm Coast, what is your strategy to augment the fact that these cameras are no longer catching people that are breaking the law?
Well, it's a significant issue for us because the cameras did create for us video of, you know, of traffic accidents or potentially lawbreakers who are driving through our community. So we have, we have created what's called LPR license plate readers, which we'll be deploying pretty soon. We can put them, there are trailers, we can put them at areas that we see, you know, are highly trafficked areas, and what they do is read license plates. So what it does is actually pings the communications division if there is a BOLO out for that particular vehicle, and it actually tracks exactly where that vehicle is, and we can deploy a deputy to that particular spot. It also can oversee speeds in particular areas. Place it in an area where there's speeding issues, it has a board, electronic board to show what their speeds are, and it can give us some information on how many people are speeding and what particular time in that area. So that is, we bought two of those. Some cities have them fixed at major intersections throughout their communities. I know Daytona is going that way, Volusia County is going that way. It's going to take us a little longer because they're not inexpensive, but I think that's probably what's going to have to happen to replace the video that was supplied by the red light system, because we're eventually going to have to purchase these LPRs and for, you know, for these areas.
These are, am I correct, these are similar to a red light camera? They're a robotic camera, if you will, that gives you feedback on when a traffic violation is taking place, whether it be speeding or running a red light or whatever?
No, it doesn't, no, it doesn't do that. It's pretty, all it does is read license plates, but it will give you information on if people are speeding, so you can then put resources. It doesn't replace the cameras.
It's monitoring.
It's monitoring. And it's something we can talk about, you know, in strategic planning in the future, about coordinating with the city, about maybe, you know, creating some fixed cameras which are, with license plate reader technology, which is the advanced form of, you know, just having a fixed camera there. It actually feeds back to you if there are, you know, and these are mobile. The ones we have are mobile, they do have fixed, they're a little bit more, they're not more expensive, but there is an expense of about $30,000, $40,000 per trailer or per, you know, a per fixed, you know, camera or a license plate reader. And that's the way in the future, you know, we can hopefully discuss that about maybe putting some of those inside of the city. Because the most amount of traffic's in crime occurs here, and this is just a Band-Aid to get us through losing that kind of information that we had before. But I think it's worthy of a conversation with the city about how we place that in the future, because it is sort of blinded in that particular way.
Can you speak a moment on the role of
Could you speak a moment on the role of SRO when they're not in the classroom, not in schools?
Certainly. You know, if you watch crime in any community, it spikes in summertime. And that's not only because people are out more often or people on vacations, kids are not in school. So with our SRO division, when they're during the summertimes are part of our preventative programs. We have our Dust After Deputy Program, which has been highly successful. They go to Ralph Carter, they're here in the community center, and they just go play ball with the local kids, provide presence in those parks, which sometime become issues in the community in terms of crime and drugs and things like that. So they become very active in preventative programs. We encourage them to be involved in our PAL program as coaches, after-hours, even during the work week, which a lot of them have done. One of our deputies, they have the cross-program in the county, one of our, I'm sorry, FPC. One is now establishing a wrestling program countywide. So we expect them to always be thinking about the kids and how we can prevent them from, you know, getting involved in things that would cause harm to our community.
Other kinds of questions? Sheriff, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity.
Appreciate your update. Moving along. Agenda item number four. Agenda item number four, ordinance rezoning roughly two acres plus or minus from light and warehouse industrial to high-intensity commercial, one hard road grade. Mr. Raichler.
Mr. Mayor, Council, agenda items, next to agenda items four and five, both clause of judicial matters, they're rezonies.
Are there any ex parte communications? Can I disclose?
Very good. The title of the agenda item number four is an ordinance, City Council, City of Palm Coast ordered approving for the amendment of the official zoning map as established in section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. This ordinance amends the official zoning map for property located at one hard road grade and described as a portion of the last seventeen of the Platte Palm Coast Industrial Park Map Book, twenty-six pages, sixty-two and sixty-three of the Public Corrections of Flagler County, Florida. This property contains 2.0986, more or less acres, and the rezoning is from light and warehousing industrial, IND1 zoning district, to high-intensity commercial or COM3 zoning district. This ordinance provides for conflict, for severability, for noncodification. This ordinance provides for an effective date. Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, City Council, this is the second reading of really a housekeeping rezoning item. This lot is at the southwest corner of Hard Road Grade at US one. Currently, zone industrial is all that industrial complex is, but this is a fully built-out lot that has a office building on it, and they're asking for the commercial zoning so that all type of office uses may be located here. This being a second reading, the planning board approved it, staff has obviously recommended approval. We believe it's ready for final action, City Council.
Other questions? Signal approach to the podium, and close the public portion, move back to council. Additional questions, comments, or motion?
Move to approve agenda item number four.
Motion approval. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Yes.
Councilmember De Lorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Maguire?
Yes.
Councilmember Nobio?
Yes.
Mayor Nets?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much. This brings us to agenda item number five. Similar ordinance, Mr. Raichler.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is an ordinance, the City Council of the City of Palm Coast ordered providing for the amendment of the official zoning map as established in section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. This ordinance amends the official zoning map for property located at three hard road grade and described as a portion of the last seventeen of the Platte Palm Coast Industrial Park Map Book, twenty-six pages, sixty-two and sixty-three of the Public Corrections of Flagler County, Florida. This property contains 2.82, more or less acres, and the rezoning is from light and warehousing industrial, IND1 zoning district, to high-intensity commercial or COM3 zoning district. This ordinance provides for conflicts, for severability, for noncodification, and for an effective date. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, this is a second lot, same complex, two owners, so two separate applications. Comments from the previous items stand, this is a fully built-out, developed lot, it's office, has an office building on it, and the commercial zoning is more appropriate. Planning board and city staff fully supported and recommended this. We believe it's ready for final action by City Council.
Counsel, any questions? Is this also a quasi-judicial?
Yes, just like the last item.
No ex parte? No ex parte communications. Okay, the meaning of the public, which we heard on agenda item number five. Signal approach to the podium, and close the public portion, move back to council. Additional questions, comments, or motion?
Move to approve agenda item number five.
Next. Open second roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Yes.
Councilmember De Lorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Maguire?
Yes.
Councilmember Nobio?
Yes.
Mayor Nets?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number six. Ordinance relating to and providing in accordance with the City of Palm Coast Charter for equitable adjustment to the salaries of the mayor and members of the City Council. Mr. Raichler.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is not quasi-judicial. This is an ordinance, the City Council, City of Palm Coast ordered in accordance with the City of Palm Coast Charter for adjustment to the salaries of the mayor and members of the City Council. This ordinance provides for legislative findings for conflicts, provides for severability, for codification, and provides for effective dating. This is a second reading, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Mayor, City Council, this is, once again, a second reading. It reflects the action of the City Council at your last meeting. We really don't have anything additional to add. It's really been the City Council item, not staff.
Next question. Now, roll the mean for the public, and from the public which we heard on agenda item number six. Up to the podium, give us your name, please, and your contribution to three minutes.
With the city charter, I'd like to make a recommendation now that we review the city charter. Since the city has been organized, there has been many, many, many changes into the city and the operation of the city and its regulations of the city. For one, with all the annexations that have been going on in the past ten years, our boundaries, the city boundaries have changed. Our constituents have changed. We have gone from thirty thousand to sixty thousand, which caused for an additional change in the city charter. Now, as far as your salaries go, it's in the charter, and you want to make it, whatever you want, you do it. But what I'd like to bring out is, I was thinking about this, the city of Palm Coast, the residents of Palm Coast, have absolutely nothing to say about the running of the city of Palm Coast. All the people sitting up there with the city manager, make all the decisions of this whole city. People sitting here, listening to this on television, have absolutely nothing to say about what goes on in the city. Now, you people, you control our money, you control our lives, you control the way we live, you control the houses we live in, you control the streets we drive on, and everything is done right up there, and the people have nothing to say. So now, you come in here and you do it, you want a raise, okay, you're entitled to a raise, I agree with you. After ten years, you should get at least a dollar. But what I would like to do is that you discuss this and decide that we do need a charter change. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Signal approach to the podium, and close the public portion, move back to council. Just one comment that I would offer, what Mr. Carroll just described is exactly what a representative form of government is. We are elected by the people to make decisions on behalf, whether they be thirty thousand or sixty thousand, or accurately eighty thousand, seven hundred, that's the way the system works. Additional questions, comments, or motion?
A move approval?
There a second? Is there a second to the motion? Motion dies of lack of a second. Agenda item number seven. Ordinance rezoning from State Two to Public, City Public, Preservation for the Portuguese American Cultural Center. Mr. Raichler.
Mr. Mayor, this again is a quasi-judicial hearing, and this is an ordinance, the City Council of the City of Palm Coast ordered, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map as established in section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. This ordinance amends the official zoning map for a property located in the west side of Old Kings Road north, north of the Tansas Woods Parkway, and identifies as parcel identification number twenty-six, ten, thirty, four zeros, zero, one, zero, one, zero, 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 three, zero. This property contains thirteen point nine five, more or less, total acres. The rezoning is from State Two or EST Two to Public, Semi-Public, also PSP, and Preservation, PRS, those two zoning districts. This ordinance provides for conflicts, severability, and provides for effective dating.
This is quasi-judicial?
Yes.
Other ready ex parte communications? Can I disclose?
Mayor, City Council, this has no interest to the public, as you can tell by all the audio evidence. I think this is what most people are here for. This is a rezoning request, it's actually something that, once again, is reflection of the times, where we've been talking about this for quite some time with the Portuguese American Club leadership. Angela is going to give the presentation with her own background.
Thank you, Mr. Landon. Mayor Nets, members of the City Council, good morning. For the record, Angela Pilltaver, senior planner for the Community Development Department. This morning, I'm presenting to you application number twenty-nine seventy, which is a rezoning request for the Portuguese American Cultural Center property. They wish to rezon the property from EST Two to Public, Semi-Public, and Preservation. As can be seen from the aerial location map, the property is located north of Matanzas Woods Parkway on the west side of Old Kings Road, and the property is approximately thirteen point nine five acres in size. The current zoning district as stated is EST Two or State Two, and the proposed zoning districts include the Public, Semi-Public District adjacent to Old Kings Road, and PRS, which is the Preservation District located to the west. The future land use map category for the subject property includes both the green belt district, future land use map category, as well as conservation. The green belt is shown in the dark green, and the conservation is in the light green. The surrounding future land use map categories include green belt and conservation to the north and the west, and also to the east, and also mixed use to the south. Staff has evaluated the application and the request to rezon to Public, Semi-Public, and PRS, and finds that the requested districts are in compliance with the comprehensive plan future land use map categories. The applicant, along with the application materials, submitted a conceptual site plan. This is by no means the final plan, but just an idea of what they would perhaps like to do on the property. Their current proposal includes approximately twenty-three thousand square feet of buildings, divided by two different buildings. One is approximately twenty thousand square feet inside, the other, I believe, twenty-seven hundred. Also includes paved parking and grass overflow parking areas, a sports field, picnic areas, walking trails, and wetland preservation. Staff has evaluated the application against the requirements of Land Development Code sections 2.05, 0.05, and 2.06, 0.3 for compliance, and staff finds that the proposed zoning districts will provide a transitional zoning district buffering the lower-density agricultural district to the north from the general commercial district that is located to the south of the property. This would be in compliance with public interest. The requested districts are consistent with the comprehensive plan policies and also with the green belt and the conservation flumes. The proposed future development would present no financial hardship for the city. All future development on the site will have to comply with all agency regulations, including those of the City of Palm Coast and outside agency regulations. If any environmental impacts are proposed with the future development, those would be addressed at the time of site plan through the Land Development Code requirements. Future events at this site are projected to generate a positive economic impact. The site is located in a more accessible location near a new Interstate ninety-five interchange, so should be adequately positioned. And finally, the future site plan and development of the property will have to comply with all level of service standards for adequate public facilities. With this being said, staff finds that application twenty-nine seventy complies with the requirements of the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code, and further achieves the following. Rezoning to these districts will provide a transition between the commercial uses and zoning district to the south and the agricultural district located to the north of the property. It will allow non-residential uses on the property that are limited to those compatible and supportive of the residential and rural districts to the north. And the proposed rezoning will provide a greater opportunity for the club itself to capture their future growth of the cultural center on a property that is more adequately sized for their use. With that being said, staff, planning staff, and the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board recommend to City Council approval of a rezoning from State Two to Public, Semi-Public, and Preservation for the Portuguese American Cultural Center property, application number twenty-nine seventy. And I believe with that, that concludes the staff presentation, and I believe the applicant would like to also say a few words.
And council members, I just want to, just one more thing. There was a neighborhood meeting that was conducted by the applicant, and there was no opposition, and city staff has not received any opposition to the proposed change.
Before the applicant speaks, a question?
Angie, can you back up a slide, please?
Yes, sir.
Future events may generate a positive economic impact, such as?
Just generally, if we have an event at this site in the future, I would think that the events themselves would probably lend themselves to use of any local, you know, nearby resources. Imagine the area should be developing in the future as the interstate interchange is constructed. Typically, when you build an interstate interchange, things start to appear around it, so any of those surrounding uses would probably enjoy the benefit of a future event at this location.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, you're on that slide. I'm familiar with level of services that relates to transportation. What is the significance of a site complying with level of service standards?
Well, the level of service standards actually apply to all public facilities, so you would have to obviously meet your requirements for potable water, sanitary sewer, transportation, solid waste, and all of those things will be evaluated at the time that the applicant submits an actual site plan for review. And that includes transportation, of course.
At the end.
Good morning, Mayor Nets, ladies and gentlemen, City Council. My name is Louis Maderos, past president of the Portuguese American Cultural Center, also the chairperson in charge of purchasing the property and also now delivering change use. Our community continuously is growing, as you know, our facility is getting smaller and smaller, so the future, we need to look for the future, and this is where we're going, heading to something that maybe, you know, suits our community much better. And as you know, we keep growing, businesses keep growing here. I'd like to thank you very much for your consideration of this, I'd like to thank staff for their great job that they did, they helped me a lot, and they did a great job. Thank you very much.
Other questions?
No, I'd just like to say that I've been to events, and you were definitely booming to fit one more person in.
Or one more car.
Our community continuously is growing, isn't it? Our facility is getting smaller and smaller, so the future, we need to look for the future. And this is where we're going, heading something that maybe, you know, suits our community much better. And as you know, we keep growing, businesses keep growing here. I'd like to thank you very much for your consideration of this. I'd like to thank staff for their great job that they did. They helped me a lot, and they did a great job. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
No, I'd just like to say that I've been to events, and you were definitely booming to fit one more person in.
Or one more car.
Or one more car. Are the tables for the food alone you needed in the facility. I think this is, this is great, and you do need more parking, and you do need a big facility, and I'm not surprised there will be a soccer field on there either.
Although that wasn't a question. Any additional questions from council?
Your honor, what's going to happen to the current Portuguese-American club?
It's for them to decide.
Still functional then.
I would imagine it would stay functional until a new complex is constructed. Maybe even beyond that, who knows? That's a fact, though. Small functions, large, who knows? Who's concerned with that? That's not germane, however, to this discussion. Anyone from the public wish to hear on agenda item number seven?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Edra Queen. I'm also a past president of the club. I don't want to use the word nationality. I want to use the word culture. We have a culture, and that culture is bringing here today. About seven years ago, I decided that I want to move to a place where I could live with my family in peace. And one piece, I'm saying one piece because I'm a retired work cop from the jury. It's sometimes kind of hard to stay in one piece, but what worth it is to stay in peace. I found that peace. I don't speak for everybody here, but I believe that everybody found that peace here. As to our culture, most of you that have been to our club see what we made out of. We are orderly, we are reckless, we mean what we say, and we say what we mean without being mean. My son is twenty-one years old. I want him to stay in Palm Coast. And one of the things that could make him stay in Palm Coast, my dear friends, if you allow me to call it, is is culture, our sardines, our bacara, that should go straight ahead. And of course, the political area, which you never know when one of us over here will be on that side. And I hope they represent you as well as you are representing the city right now. I would like to take into consideration of asking, please consider these people. With this culture, there are nothing but good people, nothing but good people. So therefore, please consider it a good sense of it. We're not in a trepidant amount. We are in a cause. This for us is a cause. It's not nothing else other than a cause. Answering your question, it's going to be a little while before we sell the Portuguese club and take it on one. This is not a thing that we want to do rush. We don't want to rush regret. We want to do it in a way that will make you proud and us proud. Thank you very much.
Next speaker. Speaker. No one approached the podium. We'll close the public portion. We'll go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a move? We have a speaker.
Good morning, honorable mayor, council. Our Portuguese community, excuse me, Maria Elizabeth Pereira. Our Portuguese community is large, and it's getting bigger every day. Some of you are members of our club, Mr. De Lorenzo, Mr. Mika, who is not here, and most of you have been in our club. People ask me every day, why do Portuguese come here? Why such a big community? Well, because the climate in Palm Coast is so much like Portugal, our home country. And in a few hours, we can drive up to see our family, or our family can come down and spend vacations with us. To this great nation, we came as hard-working laborers, construction workers, office workers, seamstresses, et cetera. But our children are now lawyers, doctors, teachers, technicians, political candidates, and they hold very good offices. We have helped build other states up north. We are bare hands, and we are confident that you will not deny us the opportunity to do the same in Palm Coast and to be a part of the progress that's going on in Palm Coast by accepting our proposal. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker. Speaker. Nobody approached the podium. We'll close the public portion. We'll go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a move? Move to approve. Second. Move in second. Roll call, please.
This is Mayor Shipley.
Yes.
Councilmember De Lorenzo. Councilmember LaGuardia.
Yes.
Councilmember Nobula.
Yes.
Mayor Nets.
Yes.
Mayor.
Next. Item on agenda, okay, resolution opposing hydraulic fracturing. We'll pause for just a moment while the audience and the adjustments are. Please, you're going the wrong way if you're like on a one-way street. Okay, let's give it a try. Number eight, a resolution opposing hydraulic fracturing and offshore drilling. Mr. Landon.
Mayor City Council, this is actually not just a Florida issue. It's an issue throughout the whole country. You've asked us to make a presentation on possible impacts. Denise is prepared to do that. You've also asked us to prepare a resolution opposing this activity here in Florida, and that's in your packet. But we'll start off with Denise's presentation.
Good morning, mayor, city council. Denise Bevan, Community Development Department, City Administration Coordinator. So I'm going to share with the council our last workshop presentation. So we're going to be talking about hydraulic fracturing, offshore drilling, and exploration update. So what you see in front of you is a depiction of conventional drilling, oil extraction. And these images are actually sampled from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. You see, of course, an offshore drilling rig and onshore. Actually, this is an existing well in the J Field in Escambia County here in Florida. So what is fracking? So it takes the conventional method of drilling and then seeks additional resources by radiating up to three hundred and sixty degrees and looking into show fractures. The fracturing is actually the introduction of a fluid into the casing that actually aggravates and influences the release of additional product. And it also uses a high amount of water and ingredients that some are known and some are proprietary. Where are the wells in Florida? This is a depiction of various types of permits issued or denied by Florida Department of Environmental Protection. You'll see denied dry hole injection, and of course, again, we do have activity here in the state of Florida. Not, say, within the city of Palm Coast, but definitely active. Just to focus in on what we have happening here in Flagler County, city of Palm Coast, is actually just a couple of what they call wildcat wells, and some have been denied. Just a little statistic, over a thousand permitted wells have been drilled since nineteen forty-three here in Florida. And again, a huge amount of that comes from Collier, Henry, Lee, Davis, Escambia, and Santa Rosa counties. Now that's inshore, but let's talk a little bit about offshore. Florida's east coast, which means the generally the regions that you see here delineated, actually has a, I guess a hold you can call it, on leases until twenty-twenty-two. And what that means is that a lease is actually giving approval, basically some type of authority, ownership, to explore and actually look for that resource. Another aspect of this is actually exploration, geological and geophysical exploration. And that means actually giving an idea of what the bottom of the ocean looks like and what possibly could be out there offshore. This is another depiction of the activity within the reaches of Florida. This is in the Gulf Coast area. This is not specifically to what I just mentioned offshore of our coast. But clearly, you can see frequency is happening in our neighbors and also in the coast of Florida. Now, what is exploration? So what you see here is one of many methodologies used to evaluate the bottom of the ocean. And this is done not only to look for oil resources, but other methods of identifying something ships, also evaluating for seismic activity, ultimately possibly have a platform that would have to uphold those type of influences of the nature that happens in the ocean. And what you see here specifically is a use of airgun surveys. And what happens is a vessel pulls behind it a device that actually shoots a burst of air, creates an echo, and that comes back up and is received through devices that actually analyze, again, the bottom of the surface of the ocean and then also looking for ultimately oil production opportunities. One of the primary concerns with this specific methodology, which is, again, one of the primary uses of looking for oil, is influence on the actual marine environment and its inhabitants. So marine mammals, you see here, the bright whales, which we have coming to our coast actually right about now. And there's less than four hundred of those actually across Earth. And those mammals, in addition to many of our other resources, that brings uniqueness to our coast and throughout the world, honestly. So at workshop, I provided a quick status of what's happening in our legislature. So right now, House Bill one ninety-one, Senate Bill three eighteen are in the process of working its way through the Senate. It's in appropriations currently. And just to go a couple steps back from now, a lot of concern came to the public eye, our eye, about this exploration and the possible effects of that. Again, these applications for exploration is just to analyze the coast, working up to that lease of twenty-twenty-two opportunity that people are basically gauging up to approach getting permits and leases. These are just some perspectives. Of course, here at the city of Palm Coast, our water supply is critical, our fragile environment critical. Unfortunately, there's still a lot to be known about fracking and offshore exploration in some aspects. And that was one of the justifications that DEP approached, the Bureau, on concerns of expert exploring off our coast. Jobs are concerned about our say and our resources and protecting our citizens, and of course, tourism. This is a critical factor in that as well. So what staff has done since workshop is worked with Mr. Ray's office and creating a resolution that we hope captured your concerns, voice at the last workshop, and here for any questions.
I do have a question.
Any other questions?
This is, I'm sorry.
Correct.
But we're showing that we don't want the fracking. We're also showing that we don't want the seismic testing, the exploration power that, are we showing with what we're sending the same?
If that's council's direction, we can capture that specific methodology in the resolution, but I do not believe it's called out specifically.
Section one of the resolution specifically provides that we are objecting to anything that would inhibit the city's ability to regulate or restrict requirements for activity related to oil and gas exploration, development, production, processing, storage, and transportation within this, and then it says including the processes of hydraulic fracturing and acid fracturing. This is a language that comes pretty much closely from the language that you find in the bills, the Senate bills and the House bills. So again, this resolution is urgently for the legislature not to move forward with these two bills that are being considered, both in the House and the Senate.
If you want to add specifically language regarding the seismic testing, you know, that would be very appropriate, too. It's really two different processes, so. And I don't think that language that our favorite attorney disallied makes that real clear. So that would be up to city council if you would like to add that. It'd just be a matter of asking during the motion to include that language or not.
Additional questions? What?
I would discourage the use of seismic testing, and here's why. The United States Navy and most of the navies in the world use sonoboys. They're towed arrays that do seismic searching of the oceans for to detect enemy activity. You know, I think the language that's in here relative to fracking is sufficient to express our unhappiness with fracking. And I would also ask that it be, as I said during the workshop, copied to the Environmental Protection Agency as well as the state legislature.
Questions? So you know, I mean, the public, and for the public, should we order this agenda item?
Also put in language against the seismic testing. I think it goes hand in hand, part in parcel, but it is a separate issue. And I think it should be enunciated in your resolution to also go against seismic testing. Also, at the Flagler County meeting yesterday, they are crafting ordinances based on those already passed by Pasco and other counties against the testing and fracturing, and maybe that asks that the city would keep up in concert with them to see how that is going along. So if we meet somewhere down the line to amend it and strengthen our regulations against this, we can do so.
Thank you. Next speaker.
It's not called Palm Coast. Is there any way that you can restrict the amount of mineral rights that some of these people are fracking? In other words, I was looking at that display, right? It shows going down and then going across. Now, if somebody is, if somebody's going to drill, let's say in Volusia County, can we restrict them to just Volusia County? And they can't, like, you know, crawl across and come into Flagler County or Palm Coast? I don't know. I'm just wondering if we can do that legally?
We'll try to get an answer.
I got a question, right?
Try to get an answer for that one. Next speaker. Next speaker. No one approached the podium. We'll close the public portion. We'll go back to council. Let me offer some comments, if I may. Initially, when Flagler County first proposed the resolution opposing this, I presumed that it would speak for the entire county. that it would speak for the entire county. Whether it did or didn't, it is quite apparent that the legislature in Tallahassee is ignoring that position. So I think it's important to jump on board for a couple of reasons. First of all, fracking, hydraulic fracturing is designed to open up, to increase the permeability of the subocean floor layers. Right now, as Mr. Adams pointed out at the last workshop, when we draw water from the Florida aquifer, we get from a portion that is reasonably free of saline. But if you move around, out west, north, there becomes more and more brackish, more and more saline. Where is that salt coming from? It's not coming from a box of diamond crystal. It's coming from the ocean. It is permeating inward. And if you do anything to increase the permeability of those layers of shale, you increase the possibility slash probability of more saltwater intrusion, jeopardizing our water supply, or at least proportion of our city's water supply. Second issue is the injection of these known and unknown chemicals. We're very cautious here in Palm Coast with our recycling, what you do with hazardous materials. We have very, very strict regulations that say you can't just pour them down the sink, flush them down, or throw them in the canals. And here, we're going to put them into the oceans adjacent to our shoreline. Bad idea. The bill, as it's been rewritten in Tallahassee, says you can do whatever you want at the local level, as long as it doesn't constitute a moratorium on fracking, as long as it doesn't hinder, or inhibit, or prohibit, or inordinately burden. That's the reverse way of saying who got the leg to say about it. Because any kind of regulation can be deemed inordinate burden. So I think it's very important for our protection and the protection of our neighbors that we support this resolution. To Mr. Carroll's question, could we, in our ordinances, say that a well in Volusia County or St. John's County could not have a horizontal component protruding into the areas surrounding Flagler County? With the exception of Marine Land, which is the only city that I know of that owns three miles of offshore ocean, we have no control over the offshore ocean whatsoever. That's the federal government. I doubt very much that we could pass an ordinance that would restrict that. But even if we could, the concept of fracturing is such, you don't know how far the extent of that fracture is going to go. It could go well beyond the extent of the horizontal probe. So for all these reasons, I'm going to support this resolution. Additional comments, questions, or a motion?
I would like to put the seismic testing in it only because I think sometimes when it gets to, when someone questions it, they'll say, well, that wasn't put in there. So I want to make it specific that we're against that also.
I would support that because seismic, the seismic testing is the camel's nose in the tent. Once you commit the testing, oh, look, there's oil. Now, how can you not allow us to frac for it? Yeah.
The camel's nose in the tent.
You have, no, the camel sticks his nose in the tent. You don't think about it. Pretty soon, he's got his head in the tent. Pretty soon, you're sleeping with the camel inside the tent. It's an intrusion. It's a progressive intrusion. Sorry about that. Comments or a motion? Now, we have a motion from council membership lead that would support this resolution and include the seismic testing as part of our request.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for resolution opposing hydraulic fracturing, not for drilling to include the seismic testing.
For a second.
Second.
Motion's been second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number nine, resolution approving amending council.
Mr. McQuarrie, any questions?
Who asked that we do send this to the EPA?
Send it to everybody. Let it be known. Yeah, that's fine. Agenda item number nine, resolution approving amended council policy and procedures throughout public participation at city council workshops. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, city council. Currently, your policy is during business meetings, you will take no action before giving the public an opportunity to speak on the item, and then at the end of the meeting, have a public comment time for any comments on any subject they'd like to make. Workshops, the policy is that that's the time when city council discusses issues amongst themselves, and that the public is not invited to speak unless city council has someone they specifically ask to speak. You've asked for this resolution to consider a change to the workshop policy that would include a public comment period at the end of the, towards the end of the agenda, similar to which we do here in public meetings. You've also asked that those comments be limited to items that were, relative to items that were on the agenda that day. And so our favorite attorney has drafted a resolution to accomplish that with the assistance of city clerk. I do think you have to be very careful about when someone gets up to speak, you say you can't speak about that because it's not on the agenda. So I think you need to have a little bit of discussion as to how you can limit that conversation, the comments I've received. But other than that, staff has no other comments.
Additional questions? I don't understand, I don't see the need to limit what they speak of. We don't usually have 40 minutes of people speaking, so I don't really think that we're going to say anything by not, just not letting them speak whatever, whatever they want to say. And that's a good time, because that's the time where we're here to have conversation. So maybe, you know, if they say something that's pertinent and timely, maybe we can talk about it then, or we can move it off. But so, I'm in favor of this, and I'm in favor of people of both agenda items and non-agenda items.
Yet there wasn't so much question.
Yeah.
State position.
That's okay. We'd be lenient. Are you okay with it?
Any council additional questions? That will open the meeting for the public. Open for the public, which we heard in agenda item number nine.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. I think we need to stick to whatever is on the agenda, because otherwise you get people in there, and it's all right to come with their gripes right now at the general business meeting. But the workshop is to enhance yours ability to figure out what's good and what's not good and everything. And if you have all kinds of tangents coming in here and coming in there, you'd be all the time. That's supposed to be a workshop for specific items that are on the agenda. And we, I prefer to stick to the agenda, stick to whatever, whatever y'all are discussing on the agenda. And I would like the privilege of getting up and voicing my opinion whenever I think it's necessary. Thank you.
Good. Next speaker. Come on, Jack, you don't need more than.
Jordan Bell, Palm Coast. Thank you for considering this. I had brought this up before. I think any information provided, or an idea or tangent that somebody can come up with in a workshop that may not have been thought of is a good idea. And if you just keep it to the consent agenda that you're talking about in the workshop, that's fine, but at least you may hear something that you may not have thought of, and give you food for thought and time to work on before the council meeting. So I hope you pass this. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Jack Towns. Why can we just, you know, throw it into the water and test it? Try it for two or three sessions. And if it works, then it's fine, then you can do what you want to do. But let's try it out first. And if it doesn't work, you can just say, well, we tried it, and the people have taken advantage, so we'll just quit. So that's what I said, just give it a shot. Try it, and then act on it.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Go approach the podium, close the public portion, move back to council. Additional questions, comments, or motion?
I do have a comment.
Second. I do have a comment.
Oh, sorry.
I'm going to oppose this because I don't think it's necessary. I'd like to disuse the public of the notion that somehow, by not being able to speak at a council workshop, that you are somehow restricted from sharing your opinions with council. Every one of us has a website, and one of us has a telephone, and every one of us has an address, and it is not uncommon, in fact, Mr. Nobiel speaks to this a number of times, of being approached by citizens individually, collectively, outside of city council workshops to share their opinions and their thoughts. We all have that opportunity, and everybody from the public has that opportunity. If, however, this motion passes, I'm going to suggest that it be done with open comments, because let me tell you, for someone who has shared these meetings for the last nine years, it is sometimes difficult intellectually, and sometimes difficult emotionally to say, no, you have to stop talking, you're not on an agenda item. So if you're going to allow this, then let's allow it. I agree, Steve, it's probably not going to overly burden us, because I look into, as long as I am sharing these meetings, I will continue to limit it to three minutes, which is quite common in the Florida legislature. Other than that, additional questions, comments, or a motion?
Motion's been made, Your Honor.
Who made the motion?
I did, Mr. Nobiel.
And the second was?
Mr. Nobiel.
Mr. Nobiel. All in favor? Questions, comments, thoughts?
Bill, is your motion to leave it as written?
It's possible to suggest amendment, or actually, can you amend that if there's been a motion?
Certainly.
Okay.
You would vote on the amendment first.
Correct. Right now, there's a.
There's a motion to pass the resolution.
As is. That is the only limit to just a discussion.
So do I need to ask Mr. McQuarrie to consider the amendment, or do I ask the board to consider the amendment?
Why don't we need to bog down?
Or could Mr. Nobiel?
We like to offer amendment to the motion.
Or we could arm wrestle.
Or throw darts, or whatever.
Bill, would you consider having an open, open comment?
Yeah, well, because as I said at the workshop, Mr. DiLorenzo, whatever we do is not carved in stone. As Mr. Carroll points out, you know, if we try this and it just isn't productive, we can stop. Or we can modify it. I have no problem with what you're saying.
Okay, so.
You're proposing an amendment, then I'd modify my motion to include language that would open it up to God and everybody.
Correct. Well, if you're, if you're.
You need the motion.
Changing your motion, we don't need a motion on an amendment because the motion itself has changed. My understanding is your motion now is to approve public comment on any topic at workshops.
It is.
Correct. Motion's been second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I am opposed. Motion carries for one. And not overruled, because I voted. Agenda item number 10, resolution approving contract with PC Construction Company of the wastewater treatment plant number two project. Mr. Landon.
This is our wastewater project that we've been working on for a number of years. And there has been some discussion out there between wastewater and waters. We want to stress that wastewater is better known as sewer, and that this is not potable water plant. We have plenty of capacity in that area, but our wastewater treatment plant, we only have one, and it is very near capacity. Steve is going to make the same presentation he did at the workshop to let the public to hear the background, and a lot of work that's gone into getting to this point, and then what the construction contract proposal is. Steve, take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Landon. Morning, Mayor, city council.
Morning.
Director Steve Plantagen, community development director for the community development department. I have with me today as well some folks I'd like to recognize. Mary Cronenberg, who is our project coordinator for the community development department and the construction management and engineering division. And we have two members of our design team to this project, CPH engineers, is Lucina Shu, who is the design engineer, and Mr. David Garog, the president of CPH. So once again, we're here to discuss the wastewater treatment plant number two construction Wastewater treatment plant number two is located up in the northwest portion of the City of Palm Coast. It is co-sited with our water treatment plant number three facility. It's been there since 2008. It's roughly three miles north of Palm Coast Parkway, just off of US Monopuvade. Our existing treatment facility, plant number one, is at the Indian utility drive. It is rated at 6.83 million gallons a day, permitted capacity. Some of the items that we've completed to date to get us to this point for the construction contract is in March, we had a public hearing and approval of the capital financing plan and facility plan. In March, we submitted for public hearing summary and city's resolution to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. In June, there was a submitted for readiness to proceed package. And then in August, we had a DEP state revolving fund hearing was held. November of 2015, we actually advertised for the bids for this project. In December, the city signed the state revolving fund loan agreement with the FDIP. And on January 20th, we received three construction bids. Our proposed construction contract today is with our low bidder, PC Construction Company. The plant's construction cost as bid is $25,108,000. We are proposing a 5% contingency, bringing the total wastewater plant construction appropriation to $26,363,400. We have a $30,100,000 SRF loan that will also pay for two additional projects that will support this facility. The disposal line that will go to dispose the effluent that we don't use as reuse, as well as we have a master pump station designed on Metansus Woods Parkway that will help turn around the flow from the northwest quadrant of our community, basically west of I-95, north of Palm Coast Parkway. We will be working on rerouting that flow from our existing facility to this new facility. So our action items today, our action item would be to recommend to you for approval of the construction contract. Then in the spring, our construction schedule would be to begin the construction process with our contractor, with a substantial completion date, basically hitting on or about late calendar year 2017, early calendar year 2018. And with that, that concludes our presentation, but we.
Additional questions?
I take any questions?
Just one question, Mr. Mayor. We, our growth, from what I understand, I think it's exceeding what we had planned for us, hitting our limit. How is that going to, because my guess is if it's already high, the growth more than higher than we anticipated, it's probably going to stay there.
We don't.
Go ahead.
I'm not sure I'm answering your question, Mr. Nobiel, but I'll give it a shot.
Are we going to reach capacity before that plant is ready?
We think there's a great chance that we could reach capacity before the plant's ready. We don't believe it's going to happen, but because you don't know, the rainfall amounts, all kinds of different factors.
You said, you said two things there. You said, we believe, and then you said. You said, "We believe," and then you said, "We do believe."
We believe it could happen.
Could happen.
Do not expect for it to happen.
Okay.
So our schedule says that we'll be complete before it happens. Best estimations in the future as far as flows go. But flows do go up and down, the rainfall amounts and those kinds of things. So it's possible that we could actually reach our capacity.
And what are the ramifications if we do?
Normally, and we get too involved in this, I'll probably let David speak, but normally I believe what happens is, once we've started construction, we are now showing the Florida Department of Environmental Protection that we're working towards it, we used good judgment. Things happen, rainfall happens, those kinds of things happen. If it exceeds it, we are on line for finishing our facility and meeting our capacity needs. So normally, DEP would not cause us any issues.
And our current system, what above that level that says we've hit our max, what above that can we handle?
That would highly depend on whether you're talking about an hourly of flow rate, a daily flow rate, or over a long extended period of time. We've had, you know, our plant number one is rated at 6.83 million gallons a day. We've had days that I believe, unless Richard corrects me, that we've had over 10 million gallons a day flow into the plant. So for very short time periods, we can handle quite a bit more than that, but that's what our permitted flow is. We cannot handle those kinds of flows over any of the time.
On an extended basis, okay.
There's safeguards. You don't design the plant to operate at the max all the time, there's safeguards. There has to be because the rainfall, rainfall has such an impact on the flow. Different processes, different things that we deal with all the time. But it's critical that we move forward because we are seeing the growth as you've indicated. You know, this isn't, well, may might need this plant. It's ready now, it's just a matter of, you know, so at this point, really, sooner or later, it's better.
Yeah, definitely.
You have a question. You said the additional money above the 26 to the 30 is the two other projects, one of which is the effluent disposal. Now, our existing water treatment plant, we have rapid infiltration basins, we have connections to reuse lines, we have, what is the proposal? Where does the effluent from this new stormwater plant go?
The, well, hopefully, most of the effluent will go to reuse, our reuse base, our customer base for reuse. But what doesn't go to reuse will go to, I believe it's called the Hewlett Branch Swamp. It's basically the trail between US One and the middle school, Belterra Middle School in that area is where the design for the outfall actually flows into the swamp area and then travels to the north. We are also looking to the future as possible ribs or hydration in areas to the west of the treatment facility, out in the rainier lands.
The reason I asked this question was that the most recent meeting of the Northeast Florida Regional Council, the Water Management District went on record extolling Pluton County and a grant that the Water Management District given to Pluton County for this novel idea of a rapid infiltration basin. I communicated with Mr. Adams, and we've had it for years. Why aren't we getting comparable praise? If we have to do ribs up there, would we then be able to refer grants from the Water Management District?
We could, and we would definitely look into that.
Need to keep that in mind. What's sauce for the goose would be sauce for the game. That's another one, Bill, I'm sorry. Mr. Lorenzo.
I was unaware of this fascinating shit with animals here.
We currently hold reuse waters, waters available for our reuse customers at Cigar Lake. So would there be another holding area for this? Or are you going to pump everything to Cigar Lake and then is Cigar Lake capable of holding more? What is the capacity for Cigar Lake?
We do not have a holding pond, if you will, for this facility. But what we do have, Mr. Lorenzo, is this facility's reuse system interconnects with wastewater plant one's reuse system. So basically, we have one reuse pipeline or transmission system. So waters from wastewater plant two could go to the Cigar Lake pond, or they could go direct to customers that are now fed off wastewater treatment plant number one's facility.
I don't know if you've got this off the top of your head, but the future plans for Palm Coast Park and what was the Sawmill?
Eagle Lakes.
Creek, yeah. They'll all be required to have reuse when they're developed?
Yes, they will.
Additional questions? See, no open means of opponent, which we heard on agenda item number 10.
Jack Carroll. Just one question. If the plant one is, has a 6.8 capacity, why are we just building one that's only got a 2 million capacity? You know, in other words, if you have a big plant that's going to overflow or whatever happens, why are we building a smaller one? Why aren't we building something that's going to project what's going to happen in the future? You know, I don't know if it's a cost matter or what, but I think we should have, we should figured something a little bigger. And because, like you said, there's a chance that that overflowing also, being so small. So I just wonder, why is it that we didn't go a little bit bigger?
Got you. Next speaker. Next speaker. See, no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, go back to council. But first, why are we not building a 6 million gallon plant right off the bat?
Expandable, isn't it?
Yes, it is. It's designed as 2 million, as a phased project, basically. The site location is set up for 6 million gallons a day in the future. But we don't want to spend the money to build a 6 million gallon plant and have some of the equipment basically out of sorts, if you will, by the time you need it. It's sensible to design the facility to handle 6 million tankage, some of the generator improvement, structures, things like that, electrical structure, but have it set up to where you phase the actual improvements. So it's quite likely we will do 2 million gallon increments along the way. So the best time will probably come to you would be for a 4 million gallon plant.
Why didn't DOT build a six lane I-95 right at the beginning? You built your end capacity as needed.
Hit the right away, then build it a phase.
Talking about roads, they always fall behind. We're not going to do that.
Mayor, if I may add to that, you know, not just from the technical standpoint of inefficiency if you have a plant that's only a third, a third of it being used. But this is customer-based, is key to funding this. In other words, you need to have the number of customers to support that. Otherwise, you're going to charge existing customers more than necessary. And then as your customer base increases, then you'll have additional revenue to actually pay for those additional costs. So it's a combination from a technical standpoint, but also a financial standpoint. It's a lot more efficient to do it in this phase approach.
In today's dollars, any idea what an increase to two, an increase of 2 million gallons would be?
Well, no, because we don't know what the timing would be, Mr. Nobiel, for one. But it should be less money in the future unless a long period of time elapses because basically what you have is a facility set up for that next 2 million gallon increment. So some of the improvements that are being made now is really looking at the cost for 6 million gallons. As opposed to just the two. So if we built just a 2 million gallon project that wasn't expandable, it wouldn't be 25 million.
No, no.
It'd be 18 or 20 million.
What I was asking was what today's, in today's dollars, to add an additional 2 million gallons? So if it were up and running at the 2 million gallons, and then we said, okay, we need another two?
In other words, if you already got a plant there and now we're adding, in other words, we have 2 million gallon capacity today, we're adding two additional, you have an idea how much that two additional would be costing today?
I would be wild guessing that myself. I don't know if our team has a better... I don't know if you heard him, but I'll think 15 million would be, Mr. Mayor, I'm scared. Nice guess today.
Additional questions, comments, or motion? Who to approve?
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. This brings us to the consent agenda items 11 through 15. Has always been offer the public an opportunity to speak on any one of the items or to ask if one of the items be removed before the council votes on it as a package. Who wish to speak on agenda items 11 through 15? No one approach the podium, we'll close that portion of public meeting, go back to council. Is there a motion on agenda items 11 through 15? Or does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Who to approve?
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. This brings us to the public participation portion meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any item not on today's agenda. Come up to the podium, give us your name, please limit your offer to three minutes.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Palm Coast Council, Mr. Landau. County Director, Public Safety Emergency Manager, Flagler County. This is my last stop on the city tour, if you will, to formally say thank you for everyone that has bought into the system that I asked them to buy into when I first came here. It's also a time for me to sit here in front of you, say what a admirable staff you have. Every person sitting over there at that table, I've had some interaction with, some more than others, but your staff has been nothing less than extraordinary in everything that I've asked them to do and things that we have worked on together. You know, just some of the things that we've done, obviously, is the Starlight tornado from 2014. And we have, as you recall me saying almost two years ago, one of the fastest responses ever to a tornado in the state, if not the entire country. In fact, when the Small Business Administration showed up, they said, "You clean it up too fast. You can't really get an assessment of how bad it is." So, again, that speaks to the folks that are along that wall. And of course, I know all of them personally, and they would all say that speaks to the people that are in the field. So I thank you. I am saddened even, I did make this decision for professional reasons to move on. And again, my sincerest thanks to all of you sitting over there at that table and the assistance that you've given me over the last two and a half years or so. Mr. Nets, City Council, Mr. Landau, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I'd just like to comment that Mr. Guthrie will leave a big void in our emergency response and that issues will be difficult to fill. And I, for one, am very sorry to see him go.
I mean, I know we're out of order a little bit, but, Mr. Guthrie, your leadership, your knowledge, incredible asset to the county. We're going to miss you, I wish you well. And the county's making a huge mistake by letting you go. But I do wish you well, and we will miss you. And as Mr. McGuire said, filling issues is going to be very, very difficult.
I'll add my two cents. I've been on city council for 14 years, 15 years, I'm losing track. It wasn't until Mr. Guthrie came that I was offered training in emergency response. We've had the opportunity, council had the opportunity to go through two sessions, and it was a first for me and very much appreciated. Thank you, Kevin. Next speaker.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. That was an excellent presentation by the service department on how they're very proactive in protecting all residents. I just wish the city council was a little more proactive in protecting all residents. Police Department has disciplinary actions when they don't protect the residents. I don't see that with the city council. And they also have disciplinary actions when they violate policies or regulations for protecting residents. And yet, if the city council violates policies or ordinances that they have in place to protect residents, there's no disciplinary action, no consequences, other than try and get you voted out. There's 8,560 vehicles a day going out on Palm Park Drive, 60 feet from residents' homes. Those vehicles are harming the health of the residents of those homes. And we really need some help in that area. For it to continue, praise upon the elder and in praise upon the children because they're the most vulnerable. I do believe that there's a necessary reason to review the city charter also because residents need a way of, some way of reversing something that has been put in place that harms the residents of the area. There's got to be some way to reverse it, or to stop it. Now, 8,560 vehicles a day is harming the health of the residents of Palm Park Drive. We need some help, and we need it immediately because it's harming us daily. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Jack Carroll. I'm going to say, this is said too often, it's not enough times. We have, this is my own personal opinion, we have some of the best workers in the state. And I have to give them congratulations every now and then because they deserve it. They need it, and they deserve to be congratulated on their work. They do good work. And we should try a little harder to keep them here, you know? A good man is hard to find. That's what San Antonio's saying on time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Next speaker. See, no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting. Discussion with city council may as loud in the agenda. Mr. McGuire, why don't we start with you, sir?
I would like to resume the conversations that we have had relative to dispatching our city fire trucks to medical calls. I know Mike Beadle and I have had long conversations about it. When last we spoke, it looked like we were going to move towards using the three jump trucks that the city already owns and not send out a expensive piece of firefighting equipment. I'd like, if that hasn't been implemented, I'd sure like to see it implemented. And I'd like to know what it's going to mean in terms of reduced use of the big fire trucks that the city has. I'd like to see that documented and, you know, from time to time, brought before the council saying that last year, we put this many miles, four hours or both on, and this year, we're at this, much like the sheriff did earlier when he presented statistics in the various categories of crime. I think there's a big savings available to the city of Palm Coast by preserving our expensive firefighting equipment for what it's designed for. And I'd just like to see progress made on that. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Nobiel. Mr. DiLorenzo.
If I, on what you said, Bill, there, you had a meeting with the county staff.
I can give you an update under my covers.
That's all.
I had a meeting with it, too.
His was afterwards.
You should. To Mr. McGuire's point, to the best of my understanding, I have 35 years of experience on an ambulance. I have 11 years on a fire truck, and I have 12 years as a fire commissioner. as a fire commissioner. The reason we send the big red fire truck out, there really only are two reasons. Reason number one is to get to the scene more quickly than an ambulance can, with two ambulances stationed in Palm Coast and five other ambulances stationed outside of Palm Coast. There's a reasonable expectation, if there's a single medical call, that the first ambulance from Palm Coast can get there in a reasonable period of time. We can talk about whether it should be five minutes or eight minutes, but I can tell you, with thirty-five years of experience, the quicker you get to it, the better. If that first ambulance is in service, and is a second call, now you have to bring the second ambulance wherever it's located, potentially reduce the response time. If both ambulances are active, now you have to bring in an ambulance from the outside, and that greatly increases response time. So one reason for dispatching the big red fire truck is to get there quicker. The second reason that I can think of for having that second vehicle is for the additional manpower. The ambulances, as operated by the county, you have two paramedics on board. Sometimes you need more than two people to handle a call. By sending the big red fire truck, you do get additional personnel at the scene. Those are the only two reasons I can think of. There are a number of ways of addressing those two concerns, other than using the big red fire truck, and I think it's time we have a discussion about some alternative means. We don't want to reduce our level of service, but we definitely want to reduce the excessive cost in the city. There are other ways to deal with this. One way would be to use the jump trucks, providing they were appropriately located. But there, in my mind, there's even better options that are available. So, yeah, Mr. Landen, you're gonna report it out under city manager's comments?
Yes, I agree with everything you've said, Your Honor, and that's all I wanna do is, I wanna find a better way to put less wear and tear on our expensive firefighting equipment, whatever that way is, it's gonna be fine with me.
Well, I guess it's my turn, Mr. City Council. There is one other issue, a somewhat collateral issue, and that's this ongoing discussion about the eight hundred megahertz radio system. It's a county system, we are a user on their system, and the final analysis is their system. What? City of Palm Coast has an ongoing five-year and ten-year revolving capital improvement plan. Our policy, our fiscal policy, is whenever possible, put money in the bank for an eventual expenditure. We do that with fire trucks, we do that with other vehicles, we do that with bulldozers, we do that with just about everything that we purchase. I need to know, and this council needs to know now, as we enter the budget season, what are the anticipated costs to the city going to be in two thousand and twenty or two thousand and twenty-one, whenever the county anticipates putting this new system in? There are questions that we need to answer. Will our existing radios be upgradable to the new system? Or are we gonna have to buy four new radios in a shop? That's an important question. What are the anticipated costs to the city, hard costs, upfront costs, hardware costs, if you will, infrastructure costs to the city? I need to know that now, this council needs to know that now, so that we can start budgeting properly, if we're going to proceed with our idea of trying to pay cash whenever possible. I like that. Now, we, for our utility plant, for our wastewater plant, we got a state revolving fund load of zero point eight seven. If you could tell me, Mr. Landen, you could assure me that in two thousand and twenty or twenty-one or whenever, that we could get a loan of less than one percent interest, I'd be perfectly happy borrowing the money. But the reality is, we're probably gonna be borrowing at five or six percent of percent, that's a cost to the taxpayers. I would much rather put the money aside. How much do I put aside? I don't know. I'm gonna communicate with the county on this issue, and we need some answers. I understand they can't pin it down to the penny to the dollar, but they certainly ought to be able to give us some parameters, and I'm going to pursue that personally.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. DiLorenzo? When you do that, could you also try to get some sort of a timeframe? Now, they're using this two thousand and twenty-one timeframe, but is that the timeframe for the RCP? Is that the timeframe for the new system to be operational? How long does it take to, I don't believe you're just gonna turn off one and turn on the other one, so what is the transition period going to be? These are all things we need to know, because it's part of the spending.
Absolutely. I remember a seminar that I once did, and a gentleman was presenting a seminar, and he said, "Mr. Ness, how's it like to sell me that pen?" I said, "Well, sure." He said, "I'll give you two million dollars for that pen." Wow. He said, "I'll give you a penny a year until it's paid off." We need to know how long that period of time is. If I have three years to accumulate X amount of dollars, then I have to, similar arithmetic, I put so much into each year. If I've got five years to accumulate the same amount of money, then I've got to divide by five, or six, or whatever it is. Yeah, these are parameters that we need to know, and we need to know them now. The longer we go without those numbers, the more constrained future councils are going to be in terms of meeting these fiduciary responsibilities. So, with that discussion by the city attorney of matters not on the agenda. Oh, boy.
Just to follow up on one of the items we had on our agenda today, which was the resolution pertaining to fracturing, hydraulic fracturing. Obviously, one of the parts of that resolution, resolution, and this council's interest in it, was the part of it that, for all private corpses, you asserts our home rule. And I just wanna, and no, Mayor, this is something you brought up before, but the thing that I wanna make sure this council's aware of, and the public is aware of, is that was just one of more than twenty bills that have been filed this legislative session, which seek to preempt in some way or another, local regulation of matters that arguably do not need to have statewide regulation, but that arguably are better off left in the hands of the local communities that deal with their problems. And I think fracturing is just one example of that, because certainly, there are important issues that every local community feels very important to be able to continue to regulate. Groundwater, obviously, is something that's so important. So I wanna make sure that this council, and I know the Florida League of Cities is very active up in Tallahassee, but to the extent that we all can work with our elected officials, that we elect locally and send up to Tallahassee to express our dissatisfaction with these ongoing and increasing efforts of preemption, I wanna bring this to your attention, because it's just, every Monday, I go through this follow-up memorandum from the Monday morning column of the Florida League of Cities, and it's just amazing the number of bills that are out there, that are pending right now, preempting our ability to protect our own citizens here in Palm Coast and Flagler County. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion with city manager of matters not on the agenda.
Sure, let me start with the EMS and fire issue. You know, just for background, for anybody who is listening, this has been an issue that came up during budget time, when we're contemplating buying additional fire trucks in the operation, how we can make it as efficient as possible. We made a presentation in the city council, and then you instructed us to attempt to work with the county, to see if we can come up with a better system to operate as efficiently as possible and as seamlessly as possible, because we're both providing EMS services, first responder services, fire, et cetera. We've had some very productive meetings with the county administration, includes our fire department and their fire department. The two fire departments have been meeting at the supervisory level with a proposal that Deputy Chief Forte has come up with, to try to combine EMS operations as much as possible, that would make it more efficient, hopefully not have to send out fire trucks. We have scheduled a workshop for, to present that to city council, that option, and trying to work out some of the details. You also have asked specifically to set up a meeting with the county commissioners to discuss this jointly, and I think that at this time, it's be good for you to be briefed on it before you meet with the county commissioners, hopefully they will be briefed on it also, and then for the two groups to get together, but I think it'd probably be a good time to try to schedule that, and if it's acceptable to everybody, I'll work with the mayor for him to send a letter to their chair and ask for that meeting, so we can discuss some options and how best to proceed with coordinating our emergency services. So that's kinda where we are, we're working towards that. I've been pleased with the progress we've made so far, but still have all the details to work out, which is always the critical part. The radio system, communication system, I've brought that up a couple times, that I agree with you, is critical. It's critical both on the financial side, but also from the technical side, to make, you know, just like the water treatment plant, you know? It's, you have efficiencies to make the plant work well, but then you have the dollar side of radios and everything else, nothing different. We have recently met with the county administration, emergency management. I asked a number of questions, and they were able to answer many of them, but for the most part, this is in the future for them, and that's really what they are looking towards, is more in that two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one type timeframe. We've tried to stress that they currently have a debt on their main system, and I think they're planning on issuing debt for replacing the system with the new technology, something they have to do, because the current system will not be supported by the manufacturer after two thousand and seventeen. And so there's that concern between two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and twenty-one. But there's also that financial side of it, and we agree a hundred percent, we already have internal teams set up to start getting those answers to those questions. We are going to invite the county and our partners with Benell and Flagler Beach to be included in that, because they all, we all have a compatible system. We're hoping to have the kind of questions, answers to kind of questions that the mayor has brought up for this budget cycle. I will say that Mr. Quinn has already set up a communication fund, similar to our fleet fund, in fact, it's actually a subset of that, but it's, for the most part, shot in the dark, which is not a good way to set up your long-term plan. We are hoping the county will have representatives to, because it's so critical, some of their items, because it is their, the backbone is their system. If they are not willing to sit down now and still wanna do it in the future, we're gonna proceed with our staff. Must stress, and I must, before I go to that point, talk to Sheriff Manfry, he is very much supportive of this, too. The city of Palm Coast and the sheriff's office are the two largest users, we're both about the same size, and so we will definitely include the sheriff in that conversation. I know he will have representatives there looking for answers to the same type of questions. I must stress that this is not just emergency services for us, this is also how our parks, people communicate, our utility, our streets, our whole network out there relies on this communication system. And when you talk first responders, Mr. Guthrie commented about our great response for the tornado we had a couple of Christmases ago. That wasn't just fire, that wasn't just EMS. They can't do anything if the tree's going across the street, and we don't have people out there with chainsaws, you know, our stormwater, you know, we had a big heavy rain. These people rely totally on this means of communication right now, to get our resources out there where they need to be, and we talk amongst ourselves, so it's, fire can talk to our crews, our crews can talk to fire, can talk to dispatch. So we will involve all of those parties in getting those answers. It's one size doesn't fit all. We have handheld radios, we got radios in vehicles that are mounted in the vehicles, but Mayor, we're very prepared to move forward with getting those answers as best we can, and hopefully the county administration will be at the table also with us. And that's one thing I would ask that you really stress, is that we all need to be doing this together jointly, it's gonna be a whole lot more efficient. I had a couple other items, unless you have questions on those two? The, our local Realtor Association has asked for your assistance with an issue that I think is serious enough to warrant your support. They have found out that the Cape Coral and Fort Myers Realtors Association, they have two right now, they want to combine into a regional approach, which is fine, you know, but they want to call it the Royal Palm Coast Realtor Association.
We go royalty?
The, obviously, the concern is, as soon as you start having a Palm Coast on the west side, and a Palm Coast on the east side, and with today's search engines, you put in Palm Coast, it could become very confusing as to where Palm Coast is located, if you're gonna have a Palm Coast on the east side and the west side. So they've asked, and I've sent it all to you, a draft, a letter from the mayor to the state association, I believe it is, that would suggest that would not be a good idea.
How about they call it the Royal Gulf Coast Realtors, or something like that?
Something that, I think it's indicative of the fact that probably don't even know Palm Coast is out there, and that's not good.
Or, quite the contrary, they know of our successes, and able to beat you back.
That could be true, but having two Palm Coasts, you know, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense, and Realtor associations are so critical as far as new people coming in and that identity, so if you're okay with that, we'll finalize the letter and have a...
A question, Your Honor, if Cape Coral and Fort Myers do not respond to our satisfaction, we just went through a legal exercise with the people that wanted to use our logo, is this a potential, if they don't wanna play nice?
Yeah, it really depends upon the nature of the infringement. Unfortunately, with the company that you just referenced, they were actually using our seal, which we had copyrighted, so we were able to express to them how that violated our federal protections under federal law, and they cooperated very quickly to remove that infringement. I'm not aware of exactly the extent of the infringement. From what I'm hearing today, it sounds like it's more of just a use of the term Palm Coast. We do not have, as far as I understand, any federal protection of that term Palm Coast at this point in time, so we would not be able to write the same kind of demand letter to this organization. Having said that, we would, of course, look into every possible avenue of relief that we could for the protection of Palm Coast, as well as the Realtors.
Please do, because I think that the mayor's point is well taken, I mean, we can only have one Palm Coast in Florida.
This was brought to our attention by our local Realtors?
Yes.
We have a very, very strong, very vibrant Realtors Association here in Flagler County. They've asked for our support, I've asked them for their support. Jointly, we need to convey to the State Realtors Association, this is not a good move.
And I may have misquoted, maybe national, but it's an umbrella organization, all the Realtor, whatever it is.
Whatever, whatever.
Okay.
You write the letter with council's authorization, I'll sign it.
That's what I was looking for, thank you. My last item is, once again, I mentioned at the workshop, some of the ways that we are being recognized statewide, or even nationally, internationally. We have yet another example, the Quality Cities QC, it's a publication by the Florida League of Cities, that spotlight cities and creative ideas, and Palm Coast is once again spotlighted with our CHIRP program. Our CHIRP program is Children Learning the Importance of Florida Natural Resources concept. It actually stands for Children Helping in Resource Protection. It is what our green team puts together, variety of people, primarily the leadership of Carol Minnie and Denise Bevan, but she pulls in a number of people with our staff, and also state, even some private providers out there, to help educate our young people about our ecosystems, about the importance of why we, you know, where we get our water, and, you know, the whole environmental issue, and Florida League of Cities is once again recognizing Palm Coast as being innovative and quality program. I gotta take that opportunity, 'cause I know not everybody listens to the workshops, to also highlight that the Florida City County Management Association for us, and it's our professional association for city managers, better known as FCC. and it's our professional association for city managers, better known as FCCMA, has, for the third year in a row, asked City of Palm Coast to present the annual state conference, one of our programs, as best practice. Having a city three times present at this conference is unusual. Three years in a row, probably is unheard of. This year, I know they only have five slots for cities to present, and there's over four hundred cities and counties.
Eleven cities and sixty-seven counties.
And for us to get one of five slots, three years in a row, is rather amazing. But I think indicative of, once again, the quality of our programs, and what they're looking for is innovative programs that are proven. In this case, it is our retirement program, something that we implemented two or three years ago. So they were actually looking at something that isn't just an idea, but actually has some track record, and show how we educated our employees and are able to try to help them in future retirement without having a pension plan. We don't have a pension plan. We have a 401A, which is a government version of a 401K, so there is no future liability, except for a few of the county employees that we brought over fifteen, sixteen years ago. The other two programs, two years ago, it was our Strategic Action Plan process. This is where we include city council, budget process, goal setting. The team leader of that is Denise Bevan. She was actually invited to the International City Management Association, so this went international two years ago. Last year, it was our healthcare program, and how we've been able to maintain our healthcare costs flat all the way back to 2010. And the team leader of that is our HR manager, Wendy Cullen. And then this year, it'd be our retirement program, and the team leader of that is Chris Quinn. I also want to stress that the last two, the health insurance and our retirement program, we have private partners, consultants, if you will, Brown and Brown in health insurance, and they have thousands of customers, and they actually are one of the groups that encouraged us to get this word out, because they haven't seen our type of innovative program. And then fiduciary first is our partners in our retirement program, the same way. They have primarily the private sector customers, but they were so impressed with ours. Both of these private companies helped us and were a key factor in our applications and joining presentations. So it's not just the city managers' association recognizing, it's also the private sector have thousands of clients. So it says a lot for us. I'm very proud of it. Can't say enough as to how proud I am to have such a great staff that is recognized statewide and nationally on these type of programs. Mayor, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Advice, Mayor?
Motion, Judge.
You're adjourned.